First, State Representative Deborah Baysmore to come speak. And then after Representative Baysmore, we'll have Virgil Flood, Carol Reed, and Paula Ward.
Very quickly, the evil City Council and Mayor of the new city of South Fulton. That's the answer. And I just wanted to take a brief moment and let you know that one of the pieces of legislation that I was able to get passed regarding the city, we will have a signing ceremony, and I will send that information out. Right now it's on the 25th, but I will give you more information as it's concrete. And also just want you to know that a delegation has been formed for the new city of South Fulton, and that includes Representative Roger Bruce, he is the vice chair, Derek Jackson, William Bodie, Marie Metz, Sharon Beasley-Tee, and Deborah Baysmore, and I am the chair for your new city delegation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It was a pleasure to be with you today. My name is Virgil Flood. I'm a former state representative in District 64. For each of the 14 years that I served in the House, I had the pleasure of representing portions of the city of South Fulton. And I had a great pleasure to work with Representative Bruce and others to ensure the passage of Hospital 514, which they had to refer in and to vote for the city to city. The citizens of South Fulton have made a phenomenal decision and a significant investment in their future by electing me to serve their interests. There are very high expectations of you, and I am sure that you are to the task. I wish you well.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. One of those is actually almost redundant. However, it does reflect a conversation that I had with quite a few other citizens of the city of South Fulton, and it relates to the negotiations that you're currently involved in with Comcast. Last night, as you know, we talked about how to keep people engaged, and the thing that the other citizens and myself felt was that we needed to have some way to deliver messages directly from you to those citizens. So what we would like to urge you to do is, in knowing your negotiations with Comcast, make sure there's some sort of public access provided, so that people can directly hear from you, either through watching your meetings or watching your proceedings. This is something we feel that will be very helpful to you and to the citizens, and will aid in our long-term prosperity. Thank you.
Good evening to our newly-elected esteemed council. I'm very proud to be a part of this endeavor. I really have no comments. I have a couple of questions regarding employment. I do believe at some point early in the process, there was some information about existing Fulton County employees possibly being utilized as employees for the city of South Fulton. So I'd like an update on that. I would like to know, many of us, you know, in this area are, like myself, we have very well-qualified children and grandchildren and neighbors and friends, and we would like to know if and when and how the city will start their employment process, and how people can be notified, or where would they go to find the information about the employment process for the city of South Fulton.
We have two more elected officials, Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr., and then State Representative Roger Bruce.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Council. It is a proud day to be here in our new city, and as I said before you today, I'm so happy that we have this new city and this new opportunity, and I know that you guys will seize the day and that we will make the most of it. Like everyone else saying here that the governor vetoed that bill today, but we're gonna still work through it and make sure that we come up with a solution that will make sense for everyone. From our standpoint, the county has committed itself to working with the city council and making sure that the city of South Fulton has all of the resources that it needs. So I wanted to come here today, you know, not only to congratulate you all and to wish us well, but to also dispel any rumors and any window that the county does not want to work with the new city of South Fulton. We want to do everything that we can to work on behalf, work well with the citizens of South Fulton and the new city, and certainly with you all. And so, you know, I think that there is a, I got word today of a new deal that had been proposed, obviously, by you all, so we're excited about responding to that. But I want to make sure that the citizens of South Fulton know that Commissioner Darnell and I, in addition to your wonderful new mayor and city council, are also still fighting on behalf of the residents of South Fulton. And so the reason that we, there's talk and questions, I guess, about this building, the South Annex, one of the things that the commission has agreed to is that we would maintain parity in both North Fulton and South Fulton. And so Commissioner Darnell, and not even Commissioner Darnell, the entire board was getting announcements and saying that there would be, that we would continue to maintain that parity, and as long as there was a North Fulton Annex, that we would also maintain a South Fulton Annex. But we did, to my understanding, offer you guys whatever space you want in this building through November of 2018. My understanding was that you guys declined that use and rather opted to use Fulton Industrial. So we're accommodating you guys there at Fulton Industrial, and I think I heard some updates on negotiations in that regard. So we will make sure, Commissioner Darnell and I, and the entire commission, has committed itself to working with the new city of South Fulton for the betterment of all the citizens of South Fulton. You know, I really wish that the governor had vetoed that bill, because we want to be out of the municipal services business. So hopefully, we will be able to negotiate a deal with you all in order to take care of that portion of the area on behalf of the county. And so we look forward to coming together to work on that and many other issues. And again, we thank you again for your service. We thank you for putting yourselves out to serve the citizens of South Fulton, and we wish you well.
Mr. Mayor and Council, you know, I'm excited. I cannot say that I've ever given birth, but I've been present for a couple of them. But I kind of feel like that tonight. You know, I've worked on this for 10 years to try to get us to where we are today. I am very excited and emotional about it, because I feel like I'm giving birth. Working with the people in this new city has been a reward, because they always said that we could not work together, that we couldn't do this, that we couldn't make it happen, and here we are tonight, where everybody in this audience, everybody up front, we worked together and we made it happen. And I think the audience ought to give themselves an applause for that. And lastly, what I'm hoping that will happen is that we will continue to work together. We had some people that were for this, people that were against it, but the reality is that we all live here now. And we all are going to live and die by the way we treat each other as we go forward. And I'm just praying, I'm praying really hard, that all of us will put everything aside that happened over these past years, and we will now look at this as if we have to show the world, not just Georgia, not just America. You have that internet, people all over the world are looking at you. And we want to show the world that we know how to work together, and we're gonna build the best damn city in this whole world.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, you have six more speakers. The first of the next three speakers are Mr. Jacob Maxey, Mr. Garrett Gibson, and Mr. Richard Scott. If you'll please approach the podium.
Good evening. I am so excited. I am so proud. I am just elated. When I look up here, I see faces that I know. City of South Fulton. I'm looking at a guy right next door. Went to law school with him. Tough guy. This is the city of South Fulton. I'm Fulton County Housing Commissioner Jacob Maxey, and I'm very excited, because if you know about South Fulton, we got more land space than anybody anywhere. However, the reality is this fact. They closed down public housing. I had one of my commissioners say, "Where the poor folks?" Guess what, y'all? They're coming this way. Coming south. But we will be prepared with a plan. A plan to have good affordable housing, good amenities, good schools, and we're gonna build a new house, not just a new apartment complex. That's been one of the problems. You don't know who's living there. But if I know my neighbor, then that makes a better community. And if my neighbor is not a good neighbor, we're gonna make him a better neighbor. When people don't know anything better, you need to teach them. How to live. You just don't dump a person out of a project and throw them there and say, "Okay, go live there." You need to prepare them how to live with communities, how to cut your grass, how to keep up certain things. As a commissioner, I promise you this, it's one of the Fulton County Housing Commissioners, as long as they let me say that, those things will be put in place to keep South Fulton, the city of South Fulton, a good city, a better city in the best city in the world.
Mr. Gibson, and then Mr. Richard Scott, please come down.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's an honor to speak before you, but I have an issue that I've been fighting for about three years. I'm here in our subdivision of plant and tree and the metals. There's a drainage problem where water is biking up in residents' backyard and just standing there. I've talked with the city of Fulton County, I've talked with public health, and no one has given us a solution on how to solve this problem. So I'd like to talk with, if possible, Mr. Khalid, and I'll give you all the facts that I have. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council, today, Council and fellow citizens. My name is Richard Scott. I had a couple of points and a couple of questions to ask, some regarding the, definitely the agenda for today in regards to the, and these are just questions, in regards to the franchise fees. So it is, so my understanding that after today, the council is voting on for the franchise fees to be negotiated and not accepted as they are at this point. And one of the reasons I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and my fellow citizens is that we're talking about our electrical grid, we're talking about our telecommunications transfers, as far as not just cable and television, but also internet access. This is an industry and technology that moves fast, very forward, and I would hate to see that our city gets locked into a long extended agreement where the service providers don't have any incentive to keep up and provide the services as they relate to the advancement of the technologies. We, the latest agreement that I saw, or the earliest agreement that I saw was one that was like 15 years ago, and it's been amended since, in 1999, but it was a 15-year agreement. And so I was, and it has, like I said, it has been amended, so it's not totally archaic. But I would hate for the city to be locked into a situation where the technology is advancing forward, and our citizens, and especially our children, are using archaic technology and trying to compete against other communities that have these things. So I would just ask that you take that in mind, especially where it deals with our internet access, and any other economic motivators, economic engines, sort of like solar energy, things that will really drive economics. If we have, I would rather have a solar plant here than another warehouse, because that's gonna create a job, that's gonna create a career, you know, and that's gonna create a product coming from our city that can be sold all over the world. You know, there's only so many boxes you can ship in and out of a place. But if we start, if we start now, and start with technologies that are gonna be used in the future, then we're gonna, we'll be fine.
The next three speakers are Reverend Eldridge Sims, Mr. Sandy Watkins, and Mr. Ollie Wood, August.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of all, I come to congratulate you all. I'm excited. It's an exciting day. My name is Reverend Eldridge Sims. I come to encourage you. I come to encourage you because we have, God has put you all there to lead. We have a great mayor. Mayor Edwards, I support you. I know what you're all about. I know you can do the job. Don't be bored. Leaders lead. Stick together. Stick together. It's not no time to tear nobody down. We have to come together. We support you all. We support you all. The hand will be over you. Work hard, lead. I know you can do it. Stick together. I pray that you all two terms, three terms, because we need to build a team, a rodder, because if it's two terms, that means you're doing your job. Because you know how this politics works. If you don't do your job, you're out of there. Do your job. I know you can do it. I encourage all of you all. Work hard, get the job done. This is our city. I know you can do it. Congratulations. Go for it.
Good evening. Welcome. Out of respect, Mayor and Council, but in my heart, you are my friends. And I feel I know all of you. And I was gonna stick with Roger said, basically, so I was feeling his words. It's like a birthing. I remember Roger, at the State Capitol, Roger looked me in the eye and held my hand and said, "I will never let you down." From that day on, I've been totally committed, first to the People's Campaign, and then to City Health. It takes a village. This is the first day of the rest of our lives, and I am totally committed to the success of the city of South Fulton, and I ain't going nowhere.
Followed by Mr. Abdullah. The last speaker is Mr. Jim Henson. Is Mr. Abdullah around?
Good evening. Well, Mayor, I'm the council. Shocked to death to know that I'm on the general. I had no idea. I was just, not somebody else's name, but have the same name that I have. I was thinking you're saying, "Tha'wo' in Saqria," did you not? "Tha'wo' in Saqria," Abdullah? Was that not the name that was on the, "Tha'wo' in Saqria"? I didn't have the building name, but it's first and the last, yeah. Okay. So most likely, the one that is, is not consistent with this, so that's probably me. I am a New York block, and I do take part in the, you know, I'm the mayor and the council. I do take part in the work part, so getting the voting and the election work done. I don't know who put money on the agenda, is what is expected of me. But I would just say that I have, I have been working in communities, I've fought all of my life. My daddy was the president of the NAACP in Baker County, Georgia. And I remember when the Voting Rights Act Act went into effect, and they arrested him and fired my schoolteacher. And I believe I got traumatized from that. So I'm one of those guys who are really kind of afraid to quit. And I kind of am very proud that somebody must have seen something that they put me on the general. Not so much as myself, but the work that I have been involved in, and the people with whom I used for my role model. I was with Dr. King, who early on in his career until he got assassinated, and then I went to the Nation of Islam, and then my leader and teacher wound up being Lord Muhammad. And I'm pretty sure everybody knows my leader, because he reformed religion, period, and made it all one. So we think that, we think that if we gonna have to, we think that somebody must have saw my leadership, and so gave me that purpose to be here today, because I don't know why I deserve it.
Good evening. I am truly honored to stand before you and offer the entire council, especially the council in number five over there, and I sing you my blessings and my support. I just have one comment, and I usually comment on this same subject every time I come to a meeting, about that wonderful CXX railroad blocking those railroad tracks between Mallory and Bellwood. And I say this to let you know, I got a disabled son, and I'm getting of age, but sometimes we gotta call the paramedics, and we don't want that train blocked so they can't get to us. So I would ask that maybe Mayor and City Council, you can work up a meeting and invite Mr. Kamuso to come and say, "We not gonna tolerate this anymore," and thank you and God bless all of you.
The next item on the agenda is under the City Manager's Report. You have the interim city manager, Luke Jones.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I would just wanted to give you in the public an update on what we've been able to do in eight days. And we keep reminding ourselves that it has been a very short period of time, but we have been working diligently in order to establish this city. We have filed all of the appropriate paperwork with the Department of Revenue, with the Secretary of State, and all other offices. We in fact received correspondence today from the Department of Revenue saying that they had received our information and it had been approved, and we approved to collect taxes, franchise fees, and everything else. So we got that correspondence this afternoon, so just wanted you to know that we are up to date on that and we're moving forward with that. We've also set up the bank account and other systems in order to ensure that we are prompt payers of our bills. We believe in being prompt payers, and we're gonna be set up in order to be able to do that. We have some other minor logistical things to work out as it relates to space, but I continue to have conversations with the county and will continue to have those conversations, so that we'll be able to advertise effectively and very clearly where we will be located, where you will be located, and any access that any individual or resident needs in order to get in touch with you. I have been invited by the county to participate in their transition meeting on Thursday of this week. They will meet with their employees in the service delivery areas. That's police, fire, parks, code, as well as plants, to begin the transition of those employees according to the information that we provided them that you approved in your ordinances on April the 29th. So we will begin to proceed with the movement of those individuals according to that particular ordinance of resolution. In order to do that, it's going to be important that the county administration and the city administration continue to work together. I committed to them that I will work diligently with them to have a seamless process as much as possible in order to move those individuals that desire to come. And we know that there will be some employees that may not desire, but for those that desire to come, that we will be trying to do that as smoothly as we possibly can. If I may, I would like to address a question that was raised as it related to employment. I have interviewed individuals for human resource positions. I expect to have that completed this week. One of the things that they will set up will be our system of taking in applications, as well as advertising for available positions, so that all of our residents will know when our positions are available, and so that all the individuals interested can take part in that as they invite. So that kind of ends a quick update of eight days, and what we've been doing. Oh, I will tell you about that. The item that was just mentioned was the tax anticipation note. It is not uncommon for a municipality, until they know the tax revenue that they will collect, they go out and they secure financing through a tax allocation note that are known as a TAN. Fulton County, Fulton County. The city of South Fulton working through the transition committee, because this is something that they did, and I want to give them credit for doing this prior to our arrival. They were able to secure a tax anticipation note with Iberia Bank for approximately $12 million. So we are able to get up and running, to get moving. And once again, I would like to thank the transition commission and all of their members for the hard work, because we know that that took some time, and they knew that we needed that very quickly, and that they were able to do that. And so that tax anticipation note is available to us. We have been working with the bank so that we have smooth a withdrawal from that. We will only draw from that TAN what we need. We're not drawing money from that TAN to go sit over in an account somewhere. The reason being, once you start drawing, then you got to start the time clock study of which you gotta pay it back. And so if you don't need it, you do not want to draw it, neither do you want to spend it if you do not need it. it if you do not need it. And so, under your direction and the priorities that you set, we will determine how much we will be drawing down monthly because you also don't wanna go and be drawing down every week because then you're penalized if you go and draw down on that TAN too frequently. But I just wanted you, and I'm so glad you reminded me about that, because that was something else that had been accomplished, that that TAN is available. And it says a lot when a city that has no track record, has no credit report, and no credit score can go in and get $12 million.
Let me add to that.
We have 2.03% interest rate.
2.02% interest rate.
And so, once again, I commend the Transition Team because you worked hard to get that low raise in order to be able to do that. Finally, I would like to ask, um, our Inter Local City Attorney to talk about just the sections that are in the intergovernmental agreement. In my meetings with the county on last week, we gave them our comments to the first draft and we also talked about some things that I feel need to be added to it, particularly it needs to be picked up in the area of information technology so that we can be sure that everything is going smoothly as we make this transition. One of the things that they said to me was that they will be meeting in-house on the agreement. And so, I'm encouraging, um, them to get moving on that as well as we will also do the same in getting your input, your feedback, and your reactions to the interlocal agreements with Fulton County. But to give the residents and the individuals in attendance some idea of the broad areas that's in an interlocal agreement, I would like to ask our acting city attorney if he would just run through what some of those major areas are. After he finishes, sir, that ends my report.
Thank you. Um, the intergovernmental agreement is a contract like any other between the City of South Fulton and Fulton County. There's an important provision of services at cost for the 26th of fourth in the charter of the city. It's a roughly 30-page document as it currently stands and it addresses everything from the provision of services, uh, police, fire, personnel, 911, animal services, um, I gotta cut it myself. Election services, planning and zoning services, business occupation tax services, parks and recreation services, transportation services, stormwater services, uh, provision on the Fulton Industrial District, county assets, uh, hard assets, real property, uh, and then a lot of fairly legal issues about what happens when somebody is a Fulton County, currently a Fulton County employee, is driving while they're doing work on behalf of the City of South Fulton and get an accident. The, the contract addresses things like that, uh, and it addresses the term of the contract as well. As you would imagine, in any agreement, certainly one that covers such broad topics, there are various parts that are being negotiated, uh, we as your staff look forward to continuing that conversation with Fulton County.
Can you just come on back to the city manager's report? I'll follow back to the city managers. I have a question. Can you please update residents on how soon they will be able to access, uh, our website, our city website, and how soon we will be able to communicate with them via our governmental emails? I think there's a lot of questions about when they can go access our governmental website, pull off, pull off a minute, uh, minutes for me, and also when we, when they can send us emails via our governmental emails.
Yes, ma'am. I'd be glad to address that. One of the things that we had, we filed first thing Monday morning on the first was for our domain name. And we are anticipating, they told us it would take about two weeks. This is the second week. So, we're in hopes that we will be able to have that domain name, which then will be our email app and where we would send that in order for residents to be able to communicate with you. Whether we could not do it before you all were sworn in because the signatures on that need to be people that are in official capacity. So, once you were sworn in, we got the requisite signatures, we sent that off. And so, I would like to hope that by the end of this week, we will have that domain name. One of the things that I have asked the information technology individual working with us, Fulton County, is what kind of stopgap can we do in between time? And so, we're talking about items like the office suite with the 365 where you could set up a domain name, kind of more like a Gmail account, but it's still using the same domain name so that we will be able to get up as soon as possible. Because as you mentioned, it is important that the residents be able to communicate with you and the administration as well as for you to communicate with them. As it relates to the website, I have, um, solicited and then I have given information on individuals that have that capability to go ahead and set that up for us. And so, I will be reviewing that information, narrowing that group down. Um, I feel as though they're very eager, the work that they have submitted as a part of that has been, uh, work that has been quite impressive. And so, we want to get started with that as soon as we possibly can. And I have interviews set up by the end of this week to try to narrow that down so that we can get that up and running. But we will not have any of that for the remainder of this week.
I know you can't. I know you can't go into a lot of details because we're still in negotiations. But can you please explain to the residents why, uh, we decided to have offices at Fulton Industrial location versus a solid mechanic, um, because you do have a lot of residents who feel that this location would be more convenient, but there's a reason why we could not use this location. So, that's more into, um, the negotiation these other weeks.
Yes, ma'am. The Transition Commission appointed by the government initially began to have conversations as it relates to space. And so, the correspondence, all of the initial activities and negotiations were with the Transition Commission. They made me aware of their status and where they were once I was posted in this position. It is important for us to make sure that wherever we are, that it's accessible as well as the fact that it is a place where we don't have to invest a lot of money upfront. And that was going to be one of the areas that might have been a concern for us if we located any place else other than Fulton Industrial. Fulton Industrial was already set up. The owner is willing and any renovations that are needed would be at the owner's expense, not at our expense. So, we didn't have to put up any additional money because we're bringing over administrative people that were not in that building before. The county has, um, identified space that they have available in that building because there is available space that can be occupied so that we will be able to continue to conduct business and to provide a service. And so, when it came to the economics and when it came to the timetable, it's already being set up and running on May 1st, the decision was made to stay there until we can continue to study what the best location it would be for us as it relates to government operations.
That's a very good question. Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, if there's no other business to be introduced that takes you to the mayor's, the council's topic. Before we get there, uh, the city attorney, I want to have this discussion concerning the moratorium.
Mr. Mayor, the, uh, at the inaugural meeting, the council, uh, passed a 90-day moratorium on accepting applications for zoning variances and changes to zoning of any kind. On May 1st, Fulton County was made aware of that through a letter from our firm attaching the ordinance. Uh, and on Friday of this past week, Fulton County received a letter as well from us indicating the city position that the, uh, any applications for zoning that were received prior to Fulton County's issuance of a moratorium, were were still, so to speak, in the hopper at the time the city became online on May 1st, that the city position is, is the city council, uh, gets to decide what to do with those applications, not Fulton County, even though it would be governed by law, uh, that it's the Fulton County ordinance's body that makes that decision is, uh, the City of South Fulton.
Any comments from there? I'll stop with my rest.
I'm excited to see so many residents from District 1. I'm looking forward to continuing the conversation and hearing your issues and concerns. And I'm, I'm equally excited about our new meeting, so ready to get to work then. Hello, everyone. I'm excited as well and it's great to see all of you engaged and here tonight. Um, I have quite a few comments, so I just wanna remind, uh, everyone to make sure that they attend the zoning meeting that is coming up on May 16th, right here at this auditorium that we need you to hear at 6:30. I'm gonna talk about the developments that are coming into our area. So, more importantly, we're gonna need you to show up again, just like you showed up tonight. We're gonna need you to show up there and then we're also need you to show up on June 7th at the B.O.C.D. and the block. Okay? Also, too, on June 3rd, I wanna let you know that District 2 will be having, uh, Community Day. We're gonna have you right there at the horse lawn and it's gonna be from 10 to 3. I would love for everyone to come out open. We'll have, just like a carnival, fun, get to meet our neighbors and get to meet everyone else and you also get to hang out with people that day. So, I'm looking forward to that. Also, too, um, it was a pleasure to witness one of our oldest constituents in District 2, Mrs. Leah Jones, uh, come home to her resided home in New Houston on Saturday. She's 104, she's a young, 104. So, we are asking the community to rally around her. Uh, she lives right off of Old Fairburn Road. We are trying to build a community garden for her so she can come out and enjoy her garden and if you wanna donate some cash or anything in that nature, please let me know. Uh, so, too, we have listening sessions that are also coming up. If you are a District 2 resident and also a District 3, if possibly District 1, we're kinda gonna work, you know, together because we're so close, please put your name, um, on the sign and sheet in the back so we can have your information. And, please. I think that's all that happened right now. But again, thank you all for coming out and I expect to see all the faces again on, um, at our next meeting, okay? All right. And if you, uh, can go to my website, please, uh, right now, we don't have, again, like our Adam, uh, City Manager shares, we don't have our, uh, site up yet, but you can still go to my same site, electharmeliefedum.com, or you can email me at electharmeliefedum.com. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming out, um, again, uh, all of you all, especially, I see a lot of the District 3 residents here. Uh, Michael Cuddy, can you please raise your hand? I have a District 3 on the guiding sheet. Can you please, uh, before you leave, leave, if you live in District 3, sign in, uh, leave your contact information so I can get you my database and I can send you on forward the agenda and also the, uh, notice ahead of the meeting so you would be able to print those items out before you come to the meeting. I also would like to encourage you all to, um, if there has been a lot of complaints about the trucks coming through our residential community, um, I want to thank Fulton County Police Department for working diligently, um, and, uh, putting the police presence at the Walk Mall park up and, and you have seen Walk Mall park in the weekend, uh, we have had heavy police presence. But what I want to do is encourage you all to help our police. So, if you see these trucks coming through our neighborhood, please try to get camera, uh, take your cameras, take pictures of the trucks, try to get the license tag. If you have, you can get video surveillance because it will, most of your cameras will, uh, timestamp and put a date on the surveillance so we can get that over to the police department so they can act on it. Um, if you see somebody smoking and drinking in our parks, uh, please, if you can, District 2 takes surveillance of it or if you can, uh, go ahead and call the police. We gotta help them. I mean, that's why they're there because I walked through the park and I took surveillance of what was going on and I turned it over to them and so that's why they're there. So, we gotta help them, help us. Um, please, if you want to contact me, it's through our website, our official website is up. You can reach me at helen@helindzwillis.com via email or hellindzwillis.com. Oh, also, take pictures of your company. Mrs. Harvey has started a dumping hotspot, Facebook, if you're not on Facebook, just take some pictures and email them to me. And, uh, we will make sure we get that reported to home enforcement so that they can come and clear and clean up the area. But if you see someone illegally dumping, please, please, please take pictures. You gotta help, uh, our police department, help us. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. I am so, I am so glad to see so many people, the people of course in District 4. We had our first, um, open house on Saturday, which was a huge success. We're going to continue to have more and more. We have a core group of people and we are going to do great things because we're going to work together. And it, for me, it was just so beautiful to sit back and watch so many people never came together, working so diligently, and towards the end, they were talking about, "Oh, we're going to recruit together." So, they were making friends and it was just really an excellent event. We have an awful lot of work to do. Not just, uh, one to three, five, six, and seven, and four, but in every history. And I said it during the inauguration, there are eight different personalities of it and we might wrestle with it with each other, but we love each other at the end of the day. And we are going to work together for the betterment of our city. And each one of our districts is real different. In our district, we have agriculture, we have pool, we have suburban, and they wanna bring warehouses. That's not happening. That's not really possible to implement that in any district. This is not a wasteland. This is not where you have trucks coming up and down residential streets, tearing up the streets. And so, there's areas where you can have warehouses in industrial and so forth, but not in the middle of residential communities. So, we have a lot of work to do, stay engaged, and we're gonna get it done. Thank you.
Again, let me say, thank you for coming out this evening. Uh, it just gives you a, you know, I, I have not even realized what's going on right now, but I guess I am in this seat. Um, but I would like to just thank District 5 for having the confidence to let me stand for you and I will do what I promised I will do. We've already started, we had a meeting last night with one of the councilmen at the City of College Park, and we're trying to, um, break together some things towards our primary area. But on Thursday, we will have, uh, a meeting at Verdant Park for District 5. Thursday, we're gonna organize and come together. Uh, we have ambassadors that, uh, along with homeowners association. And we're gonna just come together and, uh, suggest things that you need and things that you wanna have for our community. And also, on the 13th of May, the City of College Park, there, there has been... And also on the thirteenth of May, the City of College Park, there has been a request for a gun range on Old National Highway where the target was. And they're asking that everyone come out to support this issue. It's serious, it's Monday, thirteenth. It's Monday, the fifteenth. Okay, seven-thirty, Monday, College Park. There have been a proposal for a gun range. We don't need it, but it's going to be at City Hall, College Park, City Hall, and we need everybody present, you know, Monday at seven-thirty. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. I have that address now, I'm, see if you're working it out. But it's the farm at Wilkersonville, it's eight-four-five-five Wilkersonville Road, eight-four-five-five Wilkersonville Road, three oh two-six-eight. It's near the Palmetto end of South Fulton, for the benefit of those who are on Lake. It is a festival this Saturday from one to nine. The farm is actually owned by Dr. Abdul, sorry, Dr. Shaheed Abdul, and he is a teacher of biology at Danfor High School. We're there going to be talking about how to grow your own food, how to find healthy food here in South Fulton. And just to note about this, this is really more than just a feel-good event. This is about a larger initiative of using some of all of this land that we have here in South Fulton to grow our own food so that we can have healthier families and children. Last night, I had the honor of having dinner with President Jimmy Carter and Bernie Sanders, Senator Bernie Sanders, and we talked at his request at length about South Fulton. And I mentioned that to say that there are people around the country and back around the world, as Senator Carter said, who are interested in helping us build a progressive government, and they are ready to invest heavily in the people and places that want to further that vision. So I just ask that we consider the kind of city that we want to become and how we want to brand ourselves, that we need to consider. You can find out more information about everything that we're talking tonight on my website, which is khalid@khalid.com. I'll be out in the audience getting your emails, or you can just go to the new convention tab and sign up to the team.[1473.11][1473.14][applause]
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's great to be here. Thank you all for coming out and talking to me, speaking to that, uh, the, the, the Wilkerson Mill, we need to support that farm because they're definitely supporting us, I spoke with Dr. Shady, and he is going to be hosting a reboot for Jump House Party that took place at, on the Red Subdivision where three and five-year-old was shot a couple of weeks ago, actually, the day after the election. So we're going to have some of that information coming out soon. It will be directed straight to our website, and I know Khalid, I have him, Khalid here as well. I also have some information about Lexis Todd. She's the only survivor from the Langston Hughes accident. She was one of my babies at Renaissance Middle, and I'm really close with the family. I've been communicating with her, and her directly, so she's recovering well, and let's keep Langston Hughes in our thoughts as they end up in school. The future of South Fulton Farm, myself and Councilman Khalid, started back in January, and without the bill, everyone, we agreed still will, we were successful in the new races, then we were going to continue to do, let me hear. But we're going to have those, we're going to have that, we have it scheduled at the Library at Flatshoes, located forty fifty-five Flatshoes Road, on Saturday, May twentieth, at ten a.m. So we need you guys to come out, especially in District Six and Seven. And as a part of one of my initiatives regarding some enrichment and getting our young people employed for the summer and providing them with training, we can see the back desk, there's a flyer, this, I'm teaming up with the Black Snout Health Center, Health Education Center on Old National, fifty-three thirty Old National Highway, so you can see, and call it part at six p.m., if they're being sixteen. They're going to have information regarding the training for medical assistance, and they provide placement, most are high schools, so if you know young people between the ages of seventeen and twenty-four years old, get a motor next to their being sixteen, six p.m., so they can get employed, forward to just four weeks, and waving, most of the bees, most people, their bees are waving, so you guys come out, and that's all I have to give you back here.
Very fast, I want to express my appreciation to seven of the fine people I have ever worked with on this, on this floor. They're fine people, and you hear from their remarks, saying that they are doing. This is only the eighth day they've been, I can tell you we've done more than eight days than any other city who has stood up anywhere. And so for that, I am eternally grateful. But I do want to acknowledge one thing. On this Saturday, at the Enem Baptist Church, something called Unity in the Community. Many of our faith leaders will come on that day, who tend to be there, who come that day and pray for our community. I always said, you came over here on different boats, but you're on the same ship now. And so we want to make sure that you come by Enem Road, where we're polling, it's a pastor there, and I think it's something that all of us need to come in, and we need to join hands with each other, and be the kind of city that everybody who comes to that for them said that we need to be. There are eight people on that, on the field tonight, but it's really man, throughout the night, and we really, really, really truly need you to come in. Listen, we're not going to always agree, we're going to agree and disagree, but we're not only doing this for ourselves, but we're doing it for our children, and we're doing it for our grandchildren. So truly, she's very man. Thank you all so much. At this time, I will give a motion to adjourn the prayer session where we will have meditation and personnel that. Second, I will move to second, raise your eye, change, hand another.[1784.61][1784.64][applause]